I'd like to call Lemester Planning Board to order for July 16, 2018, for our 6:30 first hearing. We have an open public meeting for preliminary subdivision approval for Willard Street. May I represent it?
Okay. For the Department of Engineering, we have a private note, LLC for preliminary subdivision of Willard Street. We were before you, I guess a little bit more than a month ago, regarding the preliminary subdivision and the vote was made and the project was denied. And within the certificate of disapproval, there was an option in order to have it reevaluated for a second time. So as such, we provided at least a middle of the same plan that was provided at the last planning board hearing. Just to do a quick little rundown, overlook the project details. It's for a preliminary subdivision with a total of 30 lots. Access will be brought off of Willard Street via two roadways that will traverse through the property with a third roadway that will be internal to the subdivision by itself. The roadways have been laid out as such that there's less than 500 feet of dead end between either cul-de-sac. And in order to also providing 125-foot separation requirement with the local regulations. Sewers will be handled via pump stations which will collect the sewage from within the development and pump it up to Willard Street. Water will be also brought off of Willard Street and drainage will be handled with onsite catch basins and retention basins in order to provide compliance with some water management. That's pretty much it. Not much has changed. If there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Well, I think the first question we have, what has changed from your original submittal that we denied?
Nothing.
Oh, okay. Now...
They were... but they tried to...
Yes.
They brought two...
Now it's just one.
Yes, one, okay.
My recollection of the decisions, the denial decision was that you could file a revised... You could submit a revised plan. I don't recall it saying you could just resubmit one of the two plans, but...
Okay. One of the things that came up that I got here is that from the Conservation Commission, is they've got an upgrade, you know, denied because of run-of-pools. Where do they exist and how do you prepare to take care of that?
We'll handle that with, during the most of the tentative phase with Conservation Commission. There's several of them located within the wetlands over here and a small one located right here. So when we do close the definitive site plan, we'll comply with the run-of-pool portion of the Wetlands Protection Act and provide compliance with that. And Conservation will also be reviewing that along the...
So you said, are they primarily in the back?
Yeah, there's, most of them are in the back and there's a small one right here.
Okay. I'll open it up to the audience. Do I have any? Anyone that has any comments in the audience or on this plan?
I have a question. Vincent Andrews, 677 Willard Street.
Okay.
My question, I believe, was the town asking where Crabtree Lane is? You can see where Crabtree Lane is?
Yes.
Yeah. Then weren't you asking, wouldn't it have been better to have a road coming straight across? Because you got a lot of, you have a lot of traffic. You're going to have tractor trailers, flatbeds, people moving in. There's really not much room where you got those in and outs. Close. When you got Crabtree Lane, the road widens out. Crabtree Lane in itself is wider. You're going to have better access for bigger trucks to come in and out and you're further away. So if something happens there, you have a better out. If it was pushed over the road in front of Crabtree Lane. Kind of like having a dogleg right. Going in and dogleg right to the back of that.
Yeah. And that's beyond our scope. We don't have control over that property in order to gain...
But I do. I mean, if someone, someone has talked to me before but has not come back to me since the first plan. We're willing to work with the town to have a road go right across from Crabtree. That's, that's all I'm suggesting. And then your dogleg right. And you connect right into it.
So you run this?
Yes.
Through the chair in front of me.
Yes.
For the record, Bill Hanning with Hanning Engineering. The developer-owner of the property has worked with the neighbors, Solis. Had some discussions, I believe, with Mr. Andres?
Yeah, my father.
Okay. And at this point, this is the plan that's before the board. The financial requirements of each eruption, I'm sure, was examined. The compliance with the regulations is made with 125 feet separation from Crabtree to the first road to the east. And then from the, from, between here and here is greater than 125, between here and here is greater than 125. Compliance is made.
Is that centralized or something?
Centralized, centralized, that's the regulation. And so, although, although the gentleman may be willing to work with the developer, developer already has an agreement with the existing neighbors, Solis, with you. So that's, that's been, they've gone through that process between the three parties and this is what's in front of us right now.
You okay? Do I have any other comments, anyone in the audience? Yes, ma'am?
I just have a question. DLC Moto, 25 Clooney Road. So the, what is the measurement from the road on the left to the dead end? No, the...
Right here?
Yes, yep.
That is about 291 feet.
And then from the other end to the...
154 feet.
And then the section in the middle?
Separation of 371 feet.
So is that a portion to either one of the dead ends or is that considered to be a completely separate street?
It'll be considered as a single street through here. But the regulation says that I can't have longer than a 500-foot dead end.
Right, which is from, excuse me, from the right-hand portion of the road, but that section, middle section of the road...
Is not a dead end.
It's not a dead end.
It's not a dead end, Mr. Loop.
Loop. Loop. The only dead ends are here.
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have any other comments, questions? Okay, members of the board.
Do you remember, do you the department comment?
Yes, please.
Do you sort of give conservation, remember there's still...
Well, on the conservation, we touched on the run-of-pools.
If I may, just to follow up on that.
Yeah.
I did talk to Andrea about that comment and she thought this was more of a definitive phase development at this point in time. So she, she understands now that this preliminary will go through the drainage and the site grading and all of those that would be considered and will file a definitive, will be filing a conservation application form.
DPW has a bunch...
What about health, I mean, health?
Well... I'm going to get the DPW one here. DPW says, one, they recommend one roadway from Willard Street. Provide general access easement for the minimum of 12-inch depth gravel access road to lower roadway for secondary access. Sanitary sewer pump station will be private. You'll need to be included in the homeowners association legal documents. Look to loop water main from southernly cul-de-sac through city of Lemester property to the south end and back to Willard Street. Require a large enough bond to a sewer roadway can be finished and street acceptance can be obtained. Provide granite curvings along cul-de-sac entrance to ready eye and concrete sidewalk with granite curvings along one side of all roadways. Soil testing will be required on all recharge area prior to definitive subdivision approval. Provide street trees per city and Lemester subdivision regulations. Application show certified varnail pools and flood zone. Evidence will need to work with National Grid for road construction and power line easements. But most of those things are covered in the subdivision regulations.
Right, and I did, I reviewed those as well. And your regulations know specifically require granite curb along the entire length of roadway. More than require concrete sidewalks.
Right.
We'll review that with DPW prior to submitting a definitive.
Right.
And regards the pump station, this is the first time that we've been made aware that the city would not accept it. So we're going to have to talk to them about that as well. They typically accepted it. The city, the pump stations are constructed to city standards. They've typically accepted, accepted it in the past.
Yeah, they set their criteria along their engineer agrees.
Right, but his comment implies that it's going to be private. So I wanted to work that out with the DPW as well.
Well, that'll have to be taken care of before you definitive.
Correct, correct. But I just wanted to bring that up, that some of the, some of the things that are in there are not actually part of the regulations.
Okay. Board of Health. Will the proposed road interfere with the septic system at parcel nine map 398? A portion of this lot will be taken by roadway layout.
So that, that lot will be entered, be connected to the sewer.
What's that?
That lot would end up being connected to the sewer.
Okay. Question on the traffic on Willard Street.
And the water.
Which we don't like.
And the water and sewer.
Yeah. Municipal water and sewer system adequate to service additional?
Do we have an answer to this? Did they ask the question, are the municipal water and sewer systems adequate to handle the additional service?
Yeah, I heard that, yeah. The answer is, the answer is yes, but...
That'll have to be approved when we get into the definitive. Some of these questions are, this is a preliminary. And some of these questions are covered by subdivision regulations and others would require. Now, the one thing that the DPW does come up with, and they, they do say is they would like to see one entrance. And I think that was a, a good feeling. I'm not sure...
At the last, the last go-around of this project, what we did was we talked about it. And the intention of submitting the alternative was to seek guidance from the board on that. The intention was not to have that be the subdivision plan before we... I think that's maybe what, maybe what happened at the last meeting. The last plans that we submitted were essentially the same plans that we submitted in alternate, which have eliminated this one section in here and looped it back in and made one connection here for the road.
Right.
Now, I believe what they're examining is whether it would make sense to put, to go back to that and put some sort of an emergency egress into it. So that you have both of the, you have the second means of egress from Willard Street and at the same time, you only have one main access from, from Willard Street as well. So something that we'll talk with DPW about after the definitive phase as well.
But you are thinking about that on your definitive plan?
Right now, we're asking for preliminary approval of this with DPW's comment coming in and gives us the ability to take a look at it. But, you know, straw pulled from the board on the, on the, on that idea last meeting, it was no. So we don't want to go through the whole definitive phase of design based upon that comment from the DPW to come back. Just to say we would, that would, not come back with one road if, if it's not...
Okay, I'll bring that up on a straw then.
Yeah. And the, the concept is actually pretty good because it would go back to where this road would come in here. This would be the main access and it'd be an emergency access over here somewhere basically. So that, that would be open with a gate.
Yeah. Okay.
And that might be the happy medium.
What, what's the feeling on the board on that? Any comment from anybody else?
It's not listed as one of the waivers you're asking for now, right?
Well, no, no, we're at the preliminary, so he's going to come back with a new drawing, okay? So we could put...
There are three waivers in the document today.
Yeah, we can put that in as a requirement, okay, or as a recommendation. As our recommendation on the board here.
But if I remember correctly, when you came in, you kind of put them both before us.
Yes, yeah, we put, we put this as the preliminary with an alternate.
Because I like the other one.
Right.
I like the single road and not, not two.
Right, but it may be, and we do have the old plan with us. It may be that... And I don't know exactly where the alternate roadway would come in, but it, you know, this house is probably going to end up getting knocked down. So it may be that the emergency egress is over here, that way you can still have the two houses there and, you know, it's kept as an easy.
How, excuse me, oh, I'm sorry. How many lots are in each plan?
They both are 30.
Okay.
So it didn't change there?
Didn't change.
I particularly like this one. I don't like the whole, I don't like the two streets coming down.
Right, and this one did not provide an emergency egress.
I don't think you did. You got a fire truck in command, I guess.
I understand that, but it may, it may make other members who did not like this plan because of the second means of egress more comfortable, just if there was a second means of egress provided in this area here.
Yeah, okay.
That's all, that's all I'm throwing out there. It's a, it's a...
I'll turn it around.
Suggestion. We can, we can work through it. We can go through the definitive phase and still can, and bring that as a more detailed alternate at that point in time and if we can decide yes or no, we'll just keep on going with whichever direction is more...
Okay.
...give us at that point in time.
Carol?
I'm just, we denied, both of them were denied the last time and the findings stated that the applicant could file a revised plan and neither one of these are revised. We're just having the same hearing over again. And that's all I'm standing.
Yeah. Okay. Do I have any, any other information for this matter? Okay. Hearing none, no call for motion as an order to close the hearing. By the meeting, public meeting. Motion made and seconded to close the public meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, no call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no. Motion carries. Okay. Public hearing for special permit approval for 145 Central Street for off-site parking.
Mr. Rowe?
Good evening, everybody. For the record, my name is Jamie Rowell, employed by the firm of Whitman and Bingham Associates. Before I continue, I'd like to pass on a couple handouts from that.
Sure, sure.
I got enough.
Did you open this? John, did you open both?
No, I haven't opened this one yet. I opened 145, the first one. I haven't opened the second.
So they're both, they're both the same, one is the special permit, one's the floor.
Why should we open both?
Why don't we open both of them?
I got a little of my time.
Why not?
640, 61.
Yeah, open the hearing. 145.
This is my favorite. I hate losing it.
I do my favorite. How many papers? I just did a double check on time. 141, okay. Open the open public meeting for a site plan approval for 145 Central Street. Okay, so both are open.
Fantastic. Again, for the record, Jamie Rowe, working at Bingham Associates and my client this evening is 21 Central Court, LLC. The project is located at 145 Central Street. Property is listed as assessors map 95, parcel 27, otherwise known as parcel D on an A&R plan recorded registry deeds, plan 506-23. The project consists of the conversion of an existing building. Former use was a bank slash office. And we are basically proposing a wellness center. It's a personal service establishment on the first floor and future office space on the second floor. Property lies within the business fee zoning district and a special permit is required by the planning board pursuant to section 2253 of the zoning code for the use of a common parking lot and driveways. And site plan approval is also required because of the change of use determined by the building inspector. The proposal we have before you requires 19 parking spaces. 18 spaces are provided along the western portion and southern portions of the building. 145 Central Street, parcel D on the plan, has rights over 21 Central Court for access and parking. And I'll go over that with you in a minute. A comprehensive parking analysis is on the plan on the right-hand side. And we completed this parking analysis for 145 Central Street, 151 Central Street, 163 and 165 Central Street and 21 Central Court. Since 21 Central Court provides access and parking easements for the other properties as well. Our parking analysis basically shows when you add up the existing uses and our proposed use, we need 31 spaces. We provide 79. So there's plenty of adequate parking available. So that said, the handout I gave you is a color-coded map. 11 by 17, exactly what I have here. And so it's easier for you to follow through.
Okay.
And you can take a look at the plan. So this plan right here is the A&R plan recorded at the registry of deeds, 506-23. Basically back in 69, 2016. Our lot, 145, is lot D, a lot is 14,200 square feet and it has 20 feet of frontage on Central Street. It complies with the zoning district at the time of the subdivision. And you'll see some color-coded areas marked on the plan. And they're color-coded here with the property. They're also color-coded here with the notes so that I can explain to you exactly which, what it means. The red, the red easement here, it's 15-foot wide easement. It's located on lot D. And it's an access easement situated on lot D, our property, for the benefit of lot G, the owner in the back. All right? The teal-colored easement is easement number two on the plan. And this proposed access easement is situated on lot G and is intended to benefit our lot, lot D. And it is a access easement. The yellow-coded easement is basically a parking easement and it's situated on lot G, the budding lot, and is intended to benefit lots C and D so that we can propose parking on these, on this easement if we need to. Now, it's a, it's a confusing situation, but when you deal with a campus, one piece of property under one ownership of multiple buildings on it, this is how we decided to deal with access, parking and the ability to give each building its own lot. That's provided for the subdivision control lot. We worked with attorney Elijah Earp and so all these easements are recorded. So when this lot sold, it was subject to these easements. Okay? And one easement was important to it, subject to other lots for the benefit of lot G as well. So that said, this is the scheme that was put into place years ago so that we can move forward with developing these lots, selling these lots and providing some sort of access and some sort of parking scheme in the future. We know that lot number 21, 21 Central Court, sold. I have a copy of the deed here so you can read that as well, but all the easements are in that deed also. And I have highlighted here, again, color-coded because it is very confusing. If you take a look at all, and you have the same plan in front of you. If you take a look at the highlighted yellow text on the plan, those are all the parking spaces existing and proposed that we show on this site plan, so to speak. And if you add them all up, you're going to get 79 spaces total. Out of that 79 spaces, we're showing five handicap spaces as well. All right? We are, we are showing striping and new parking spots on this property, but it's all within existing pavement limits. We're not proposing any new pavement out here whatsoever. This is a scheme, again, developed several years ago with easements, parking, easements, access in place to do this. So if you'd like, I can go through the parking analysis for you, but it's pretty simplistic. We took a look at the existing uses of all these buildings and came up with the parking required in the zoning code today. And again, we come up with 31 spaces. We are striping or counting existing spaces at 79. Now, could we move a couple of these spaces left, right, or eliminate some? Absolutely. We have the ability to do that. This is a concept that we're going to go with, with the board, hoping we can get site plan approval and a special permit to move forward. There's a closing scheduled for 145 Central Street and we want to meet that closing and that closing is scheduled for next month. We, we know we're going to have a wellness center here, two stories. Again, former bank professional office, right? That's, that was the existing use.
Can you tell us which paper was? I'm just trying to picture it.
I don't know, but I think it was Lemester Credit Union.
It was.
It could be wrong.
Oh, they had their offices there?
Yes.
Wasn't it a bank or was that wrong?
Right.
Their offices.
That's when they said no.
Call center and stuff like that.
Okay.
So that said, I'm happy to answer any questions you have with respect to this.
Now, did you get the letter from Mr. Mulaney?
No, I did not.
Okay.
Can you just pass it out to me?
Did we just get it? Okay.
Did he send a courtesy copy of it, wasn't it Bingham? You know?
Did we each get a copy or just John?
Thank you.
I don't know why I'm...
There you go.
I do not. I'll just, I'll just go into an extra, an extra comment that we did take care of all the comments by the city departments. And I do know that sheets came back from all the city departments recommending to, without comment.
Take a minute and read that.
Sure.
There's a lot there.
Yeah. Now, while you're doing that, I'll open the, the hearing to the audience. Do I have a summon from the audience? Has any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Julie Echolone. I'm going to be opening the Wellness Center. And they asked me to bring a landscaping plan, which I just revised myself. It wasn't a part of this, so I don't know if you want. I can just submit it.
Okay.
That's really all, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have to give that value a set of stairs.
Which one?
About on Union Street, but the back of my property is against this property. So I says, if you get a wellness center, I'll take a set of stairs.
Okay. Yeah. Do I have any other comments? Questions? Yes?
Hi, my name is Mika Lasalle. I'm from S.J. Mulaney Engineering. I'm here on behalf of Carlos Chica, who owns 21 Central Court and who owns a majority of the property that's surrounding the Wellness Center.
Could you just pick up just a little bit?
Sure. My name is Mika Lasalle. I'm from S.J. Mulaney Engineering. And I'm here on behalf of Carlos Chica, who owns number 21 Central Court, which is lot G, which is the back portion that surrounds proposal. And I'll probably give Mr. Rowe a chance to finish the reading of the letter or they can kind of jump into the nuts and bolts of it. While the applicant doesn't have issues with proposal, it's in and of itself. There's certain concerns with where the parking is shown in respect to the access easements and the parking easements. I can flag those out on the other plan. In this area here is an access easement. They're showing proposed parking, existing parking there now up against the building. They moved the building parking away from the... They moved the building, parking away from the building and into the access easement that the rear property has. They've also shown... Yeah. I think they're just re-striping the parking and they're pulling it away from the building into the access easement.
What is the width of that access easement?
20 feet. Oh, well, 40 feet here. 40 feet here. And we needed... Yeah, 40 feet.
Okay.
From the property line. So they have, they own 20 feet from the building. They have room here to keep their parking spaces, 18-foot parking space from the access easement. By the existing loading docks, they've shown inaccessible parking outside of their needed easement area. And we're requesting that those things be re-stripped and positioned away. The other, the major concern that our client has is this is an existing loading dock with 10 loading docks with WB65, 55-foot long trailers using it. Truck turning, right now there's pavement here. There's no parking. By introducing parking spaces here, the trucks are going to have a tough time maneuvering out of these loading docks without swiping into the cars that are parked there.
Do you...
This is 20 scale, so it's...
What's your distance? Do you know? Have I got... Do I get 65 feet?
I have a scale. Would you like me to scale it?
Yeah.
What would you like to know?
What's the distance from his building or his loading dock?
To the property line?
To your parking, yes, to the property line.
To the property line. What do you scale? 110 feet?
110.
I'm sorry, from the loading dock or the building? Loading dock? 198 feet.
Taking a W... This is my concern. Taking a truck turn. When these are all full of trucks, these bays, trucks got to pass without swiping the other trailers and move forward. And takes a long sweep to get through here. And the other issue is when you're coming into the property, by introducing these spaces in this corner, the trucks are going to have to meander and do some finagling to get past these spaces that now introduced. Now, he indicated that they only need 19 spaces, and they're providing 79. So my question is, do you need these spaces? And can these spaces be moved closer to the building just to give additional clearance? Because they pushed them out further from the building.
Okay. But Mr. Row on that?
Well, we reached out to the owner of the property prior to the public hearing and asked if they wanted to have a conversation. And we basically extended your outreach to have a conversation about all this stuff, and we weren't contacted. So, you know, it would have been nice to have this conversation well before this public hearing, so we could have sat down and discussed it. But that's okay. So bottom line is, let me address your concerns. So with respect to the parking back here, right? This is the property line. This building of 21 does not have an easement whatsoever on our property to prevent us from putting parking in, to access it whatsoever. There's no restriction, right? So with respect to these parking spaces back here, we have every right to do that, first of all. That doesn't mean we won't work with you. We absolutely will work with you. And we can sit down and go over all this. That's not a problem. But we don't have to here, quite frankly. But I'm sure they will, because they want to be good neighbors. With respect to the parking spots here, we don't need a... We can eliminate it. It doesn't matter. We were showing a little walk that we were going to pull them away from the building, but we can certainly eliminate these parking spots. We just don't need them. So if they have a concern about a few feet, we can certainly eliminate it. It's all pavement going right up to the building anyway. Not a problem whatsoever.
So you don't strike it?
No. No, we'll just leave it the way it is. And we do reserve the right to stripe it so that it goes all the way against the building. We certainly can do that. And if and when we meet with the owner of the property, if that's acceptable to you and it's acceptable to the building inspector at that point, maybe we do that. Maybe we do that.
You probably could eliminate this side. Give them more of a swing and leave this side. Because, I mean, it's all...
We were happy to sit down and talk about it. We just didn't hear from anybody.
Yep.
I'll make a comment regarding that. Our client said the first notice he got of us was the public hearing notice of the abutter. And so he kind of got surprised by this proposal not being talked to. Some of that thing said. He's seen the audience now. He can...
He bought their property with that easement all the way over there.
Yes, yes. And we're totally aware that easements are there. But if there's easements here, respect the easement. And likewise, in this area.
So this particular area right here, we have every right to put parking there.
But not beyond your easement?
Not beyond the easement. Nope, nope. We can eliminate one handicap spot, have you do it.
And then other issues we have is with... With grading, if there's any grading. And where you're showing parking spaces currently, limits of zoning requires a maximum 5% cross slope on parking. And it's not shown on here, so it's hard to determine whether or not the cross slopes within the parking areas are compliant.
It has a grade, it has a grade going down.
It's probably 10%.
Yep, yep. Has a grade going down. Existing little aisles, yep.
Yeah, existing little aisles, we don't have an issue with. But when you propose new elements that weren't there prior, prior to the layout. And then the other question is snow storage. Since it's all pavement, now currently, the owner is plowing over here. By introducing more parking spaces, we can provide 5% parking area maneuvering area as snow storage. Where's that snow going to go?
Yep. So again, every parking spot that we show striped is already, right? It's already paved. So I would suggest that there has to be some sort of agreement between this owner and that owner. Get together and talk and find out how that's going to work.
And the special permit process requires a mutual agreement between parties. So that has to be a right granted. Our easements and our property owner is already aware of the easements there. But any other parking agreements and following arrangements would be fine.
So there's no other parking agreements or no other access easements required to do what we're doing here. I'm sure the new proposed owners would be happy to get together with the person who owns Lot G and talk about mutual snow block.
Seems like there's...
You guys got to sit down.
There's a lot of flexibility here.
Yeah.
Okay. When you say you get 79, you only need 32. Okay, that means things can be changed.
But some of those are two blocks away.
Okay. I think we have a communications problem. Okay. I don't want to go into it. I don't care why it happened. I don't care. What we can do is... When's your closing that you have to?
The proposed owner is here, Julie Echolone. Why don't you ask Julie?
They're saying after the 21-day process. So August 7th is what they're proposing soon as... Because there's a, there's 21 days to call.
Appeal period.
Yeah.
Well, what we'll have to do is, I'm going to have to... There's going to need some modification to this. I'm not sure. We're in a, we have a problem. We normally have, we don't have a director at this point.
Well, that doesn't, I don't think that makes a difference. I don't, I don't like the fact that...
It's the last minute.
This is coming in when the abutter, you know, I don't, I don't know. I don't know if Mr. Rose people tried to reach out and didn't get a response. I don't know if... But if, if they received an abutter's notice from the city, they didn't get it yesterday.
No.
This letter stated today.
And I think Mr. Malaney's office knows all about the appeal period too.
So from our point of view, he was still willing to sit down with the owner in the back. That's what we wanted to do originally and work this out. I think that the things that have to be worked out, certainly can eliminate these parking and move it forward. Certainly can eliminate this one handicap parking spot. That's not a problem. We showed maximum developable parking that we could actually put here. Again, we're showing 79. We only need 31. So we could eliminate some. No question about that. I would also suggest to the board that later on down the road, after the closing happens, my client is going to have to come in, hire an architect, right? Because they're going to have to do some modifications to the entrance. And they're going to have to do some additional modifications on the corner of this building. If the board so chooses, and again, with the permission of the owner in the back, knowing we're going to get together, sit down and work it out, I would suggest to the board, maybe you can approve this as submitted with my modification of eliminating these because it does go over the easement line and eliminating this one handicap access parking spot because it does go over the line a little bit. And when we come back with an architectural plan showing the modifications, we can issue an amended site plan approval and special permit. And at that time, we'll have agreements with the abutter in the back. But I don't know what the abutter thinks of that proposal.
I'm in favor of that.
Same.
Okay.
What does the abutter think?
What are your concerns?
We have to wait for the legal support. We don't like it.
What's that?
He's waiting. He wants legal support. Like he's questioning some of the easements. Not the easements, but the access to his loading docks.
We don't like the proposal. So we're going to wait for the legal support feedback first.
Well, I mean, the proposal is, is what you're asking for. Okay? And what he showed on the drawing would be land taking. Because he's showing, as I saw when you made that with your overlay, was definitely on their property.
Yeah.
Which would require further legal, legal action easements or something like that. And would severely adverse, adversely severely change, you know, the parking plan. Okay? So that's, that's a total minor, that's not a minor. It's a major, it's a major change. Okay? And as this board, I have a problem. Because I have the, within the confines of the property. How many spots do you have within the property area itself?
Within our property area, we have eight, 10, 18.
18.
Yep. We require 19 on that one.
And that includes the ones you just said you'd eliminate?
No, no, no. So right now, we show 18.
Right. But you just agreed to eliminate?
If we eliminate these...
How many is that?
We have 10.
But you said you had 79.
You don't need to eliminate those. You would just need to shift them closer to the...
Yeah, you can shift them.
Those should be moved in.
You really can't stop them.
They can put parking, there's existing parking there now. We're just concerned that they're moving into the access easement.
Again, we can take these and eliminate them or we can take these and move them to the building. Either way, we can deal with that. We can deal with this handicap accessible parking. We can eliminate that. We don't need it. As far as this easement here, which is in yellow, this is a parking easement. Easement Number Four situated in Lot G. And it is intended to benefit Lots C and D. Parking easement. We have the ability to put parking there. And that's what we're doing.
And how many parking spots are in there?
What's your question? Just those?
Mainly, mainly there. And if those parking spaces, in reality, when you've got trucks pulling out of those loading docks, that's our concern. This was all one property, one family owned it. So it's different once you start carving out. You just have to look a little closer as to when you're proposing new elements into the parking lot that weren't there before. Yes, it's paving. Yes, it's there.
But the easements were there.
And the easements are there. Respect the easements, but also just take a closer look at how the trucks are coming in and out of there.
Where's yours, over there?
And that's a standard radius for what size truck? 53?
50-foot, three-foot trailer. So if a truck...
So in all reality, if these were taken out...
If I don't have trucks in these space, he can get out. But if there's a, if there's a truck here, he's got to pull a little bit forward and swoop by.
If these spaces weren't here?
If they weren't there or if they just moved them closer to the building.
But that's his property. But number, that's the property of 145.
Right, I know. But they weren't the good neighbors still. We want to make sure.
And, well, if they were good neighbors, we wouldn't be doing this right here. That's, that's my issue. And I blame both of them, both parties.
Yeah. I thought that maybe there's substantial changes in.
What are the substantial changes?
Well, I mean, the chances are, because he's looking to for an additional easement on those, those parking places in the back, which is on the, which is on the property.
That has nothing to do with the plan before us.
Yeah, exactly.
All, the only changes he's talking about in the plan before us is moving some of this parking.
Moving spaces. I agree. It's effectively not changing.
No reason we couldn't go forward to laying with that.
And dent it in.
We can, we can keep them.
And then let them work out the rest.
That whole side right there, nobody ever parks there. Can I make this comment out loud?
Sure, please.
So I go to this building every day. I look at it, see how these things are going to work. On that whole left side of their property, that's not where the loading docks are.
Nobody parks.
Nobody parks there. There's like room for 30 spaces there. I'm totally fine with removing whatever we need on that corner, not striping them so that the trucks can come in and out, but just let us use some of yours. Like it's, it's, I need an, I need an extra four or five spaces on that side. My employees can park over there and leave all the spaces closest to the building for customers. You know, I don't need those spaces right there. I just want to have enough because it's a big building. So I'm perfectly fine. Take all those off that whole corner and just give me five on the end. Five of me. I'm totally flexible.
And I agree with you. The discussion needs to be done between the two parties. It's evident.
I called. I reached out, just so you know. I did reach out. Spoke with his wife, had a conversation about the issues, what they thought might be a problem. Could they reach out to Whitman and Bam from their engineer? And she said, let me call him and then we'll get back to you. And that was on Wednesday.
And then it was Friday, 5 o'clock afternoon?
No, she...
Okay, 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 okay.
No, it's not true.
I don't want to add to his suggestion.
My point is, when did you get your abutter's notice, sir? If we have to get into process here and procedure. You received an abutter's notice before Friday afternoon.
Yes, yeah, I did.
And it's your, and the property is right in front of you.
Yes, I did. I came over to the city. It is not the only business I have.
When did you receive the notice for the appointment?
Two weeks, two weeks ago. I was in my, I was in my office overseas. That's not all office we have. We have five offices internationally. I don't spend much time in the U.S. So anyways, I had the chance to contact our engineer support. I came over to the city. I spoke with the building department. I asked a couple of the plans. I watched directly to the planning board. I requested a couple of the planning board, like presentation. That's when I learned about the plan. I didn't know anything about. Nobody ever spoke with me. One of the siblings that owns the property is one of my tenants. He never brought this up. So this was a very shady process since from the beginning. I learned this at 5 o'clock on Friday. I didn't have enough time to put everything together. I'm going to another business deal like in probably the day after tomorrow. But I would be more than happy to give him the handle of my engineer to support us. And I have my legal support that could not be here tonight. We don't like the plan.
So while proposing though to eliminate some of the spaces to have...
He already made his presentation.
I know, but now it's saying.
The engineer's not saying he doesn't like the plan.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
I was just gonna say, maybe you could take a ten minute recess from this hearing and they could go outside and talk about it and come back in.
Well.
It is a good idea.
We've got a lot of stuff to do, so.
Yeah.
So I move we table this hearing until seven thirty.
Yeah. Okay.
Second.
I have a, I got a motion from the board for table until seven thirty. You go out in the next ten minutes, okay, into the front.
Well, how about this, how about you come back in after we finish, go through 4.0? Because that's gonna be quit, right, John?
Should be. It should be.
Okay.
See what you guys like to go talk?
We'll just tell you when to come back in.
Open mind.
I have a motion to continue the hearing to time determined. Motion, who's the second on that?
Carol.
Hi Carol. Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay. Call out.
Patrick Thurler.
Here.
Fred Pugrich.
Yeah.
Eliza.
Here.
Patrick O'Callaghan. John Sissa.
Yeah.
Carol Vittorio.
Here.
Thomas Parson.
Okay, minutes.
I think motion had seven, second.
Yeah, motion made and seconded to the minutes. Any additions, deletions, or questions? Here, no, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Plan submitted A and R for Ninety-Sixth Independence Drive.
Get it up, Sagam, there buddy.
Okay, looks like somebody built a house, built a shed.
So, we have Ninety-Sixth Drive here, we have lands of the shirts and the hens. At some point, a shed was constructed on the property line, so it's not compliant. Both owners have agreed to a plan swap, or, I swapped out, moved the land, sell a parcel.
Okay. Not a swap then, they're just moving.
No, just somewhere in the middle line. Yep, so total parcel is eighty-one hundred and twenty-six feet. Resulting property area is sort of a little bit more than forty-three thousand, reducing a lot of people. With prior engine, everything is staying the same.
I move to Endorse, second.
Motion made and seconded to Endorse, do I have any questions, additions? Here, no, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, I'll take these and, old business. City council petition, I wanna take forty-one, four point one to four point seven in block.
So no.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Basically, what these are, city council petition, recommendation by Councilor Comey to install streetlights. And I got, I'll just give the, poll ten on Independence Drive. Poll twelve on bicentennial. Poll four on Flintlock. Poll five on bicentennial. Poll two on Drummer. Poll four on Indian Ridge. And poll two on bicentennial. Okay? We've talked to the DPW, we have some comments back. These are all, all roads, I believe. Oh, Councilor Comey, you can fill, Councilor Frieda's here also. There's some history to these, do you wanna fill us in on that?
He's the petitioner.
City council, what's rate?
Well, the roads were taken by the city eminent domain in December nineteen ninety-nine. And I don't know what the original plan showed, but when they were taken, there were no lights. And now there's city streets, the neighbors want lights. And I think it's a little cheaper to do it now than it was back then anyway, because we own, you know, the lights, as opposed to national grid. I talked to Joe Poyer, he gave some pricing, that's, you know, up to me to work with the mayor on to see if he's gonna work that in the budget and make an appropriation to buy the, you know, the initial setup of the lights. So I guess what I'm looking for from the planning board is, you know, what was the original plan? What did the original plan show? Was there supposed to be lights there? Who was supposed to pay for them? Why would they never put in? I guess a lot of that probably doesn't matter at this point, we own the streets, we have a right to put lights if we want. So I guess, you know, unless there's something in the, when the subdivision was proposed that there were to be no lights, which I can't imagine.
Well, nonetheless, we did a search.
Right.
And I hate to say it, drawings from ninety-nine up right to that time, they're non-existent, no, we can't seem to find them. And, but history, some people been around that long. What had happened, that developer went bankrupt. So not only the lights, I believe Councilor Frieda put, get money to get some of those, those roads paved. And so they could be accepted, so that's all part of it. So typically, there was a timeframe in the nineties and early twenties, I mean, well, there was a request by the city council, they were shutting off streetlights. We didn't have the money, I don't do it, and we waived a lot of subdivisions, like on Bridle Cross and some other roads.
Saddleburg.
Saddleburg. So there are no lights, and there won't be any lights on those. On these, the original plan was to have lights. But because of the situation of the original builders, and the situation with the banking at the time, they went bankrupt, the money available in the and I've heard stories was on the bank in Cayman Island someplace. And it just sort of disappeared, so we had no facility or any way to do anything. So what you're doing here is, I have no problem, the board has looked at it, we feel it, you know, that's our background. And that if we today, we don't waive the streetlights anymore. We're requiring the streetlights and we're going back to that subdivision as our regulations. These seem to meet the subdivision regulations that we have today. You could probably even have a few more, but this, yeah, this would be adequate.
Right, if I can explain to the reasoning for why I picked those polls. So you probably need about twenty-three lights in that whole subdivision if you go like every other poll. But I didn't wanna get too crazy and have too much of an expense upfront, so I figured we'd start out by illuminating maybe the intersections and the cul-de-sacs, and then we'll work our way in. And maybe we can do it in phases, like over a few years or something, seven or eight lights every year, and get it, you know, taken care of, and not have like, you know, all this burden all at once. So that's how I chose, you know, those polls, and provided that I'm successful and I can work with the mayor, get the funding, and there's no objection, based on what you find in the original plans to actually put lights in the subdivision, then we'll just, you know, we'll do it in phases, so it's, you know, easier pill to swallow financially for the city.
As far as the board is concerned, I think we prefer to have the lights clear, Councilor Frieda?
Back in the eighties, I think that bond was the Bahama bond.
Yeah.
Attorney Campabasso and I worked to get all those streets accepted. And it was a two and a half to three year process. We had to, everybody had to be in the street to the middle of the road. So both sides had to fill out paperwork to go to the bank and have that piece of land donated to the city so that that could all be done. All the streets were done that way. I'm not sure about the lights, I know Lynn Haven did not want lights. Mr. Bavendi didn't put lights in there, because all there was, was the ugly wood lights. Or the chrome lights. So people didn't want those in a nice new subdivision. So I think a lot of the subdivisions didn't have light to that reason. Which doesn't make a difference whether they go up now or not, but when they go back then, a lot of those had not, Jamestown, I think, were limited on their lights as well. Because all those subdivisions just, your choices of lighting was not good. It was a new house, people didn't want those lights in front. So, you know, it was a long process, but that's what happened with the bond when the bankruptcy took place. You know, the bond just was not a good bond. We all worked the highway back, back from that timeframe.
So, yeah, as far as I'm concerned, you know, any comments from the board?
Nope. Good, good, good.
I make a motion for positive recommendation for all seven.
Okay, we'll take this and block. I have a motion for Mr. Carrigan to take, accept all seven, and make a positive recommendation to the city council on these streetlights. Any further discussion? I get a second on that?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Okay. Here, no more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel.
We do Willett Street?
Yeah.
I'll open up Willett, five point one.
That's a good sign.
Do we have a recommendation, comments?
I just wanna go back to Carol's point, is it even in order to take a vote on something, the notice that had a revised plan?
The comment I got is that, as Mr. Terriosis, that a motion was for a revised plan, what we got back was the same thing. So at this time, I don't know if we can take any further action.
That was the, that was the.
That's the language in the letter.
Well, that's in the certificate of disapproval, without prejudice. So, I mean, that's just my, that's, I mean, the board has discretion, you can do what you want, that's just my position.
See, if they came back with the gate and all that stuff, I can.
Yeah.
That would be a revised point.
That would be a revised plan, and I'd be in favor of that. I don't, why do we, why do they need to go?
Well, they don't need the gate.
They're talking about the second access. And restricting the second access, only for emergency vehicles. We do that for, we did that for Brooks Pond, out the back there to. I forgot which one.
I have a question.
So what are we doing?
Debbie Drive?
Which one is in front of us?
Let me ask this, what is the timeframe, are we in the timeframe for allowing timeframe to present a revised plan to the board?
Yep.
Because it's some.
Yeah, it's a preliminary, so it's.
I'm not sure that we even.
The last time, you brought two, correct? And you gave us the option.
Brought two.
And then you pulled the single one, and you wanted us to vote on the second one.
So if I may through the chair.
Go ahead.
The last hearing, the last plan, all that stuff's off the table, okay? The understanding that I had relative to the denial letter, in the language of denial letter, was that the city was making an offer that we could reset the plan with no fee. So if that's really the hangup, I know the fee's not the hangup, I think the fact that it's the same plan, but the plan that is in front of you is the two-road version of the plan, not a single road. But we did state during the meeting that we would be willing to talk to the DPW about the alternative, and see if there was some way of making it so that they will come through it, because ultimately, they're gonna end up having to accept the roadway, and along with that, they would end up accepting whatever emergency address that came in off of Willow Street. At that point, it might be that we have an informal meeting with the board, let them know our findings. Or as Mr. Peros said, we could do that now. I don't have any problem with doing that. We would have to reopen the meeting, which I think is, I think can be done, and have further discussion. But as far as the plan goes, the plan that's in front of the board tonight is the plan that was submitted with this application. We just brought the other one out as a demonstrator, DPW was talking about for an opening location.
Well, they would rather see a single road.
I'm not speaking for them, but that's.
That's an, that's an outlier from them.
Right.
They would rather see a single road.
They'd rather see a single road. So.
And they didn't say anything about.
So we could, we could take the comments that we're hearing from the board tonight, relative to a single one or two roads. Go meet with the DPW and either come back at definitive stage, or come back next meeting relative to preliminary and kind of advance those discussions a little further, give the board some more feedback of what the department's thinking and what we came up with for discussion, we would have to do that.
It sounds like the plan to me.
If my memory serves, there was more to it than that. There was concern about creating more dead-end roads, narrow dead-end roads at that. There was concern about the impact of traffic, it wasn't simply.
It's not with the roads, we have a problem with Willett Street, okay?
Yeah.
We, and the road itself is insufficient to handle. But the problem that we have is, is that the subdivision, it is an accepted public way. And we have to, and it is classified as a collector road. And it doesn't meet criteria, but it's legally, it's a road, an accepted road in the city. So we can't, as I understand it, we can't put conditions on the developer to improve the road. Okay? And that's where it was.
I might suggest, we can certainly mitigate the harm, we'll come by.
Yeah, but the mitigation. I think the mitigation is, by, you know, with one roadway, and, you know, and wavering, because the subdivision regulation calls for two entrances. So we waiver the two entrances, we get one entrance, but they take and they give us an alternative of a restricted access entrance.
Then still needs to narrow dead-end streets, that we have too many of to be able to.
Well, we still get the narrow streets, but I, I, and it all depends how you measure the cul-de-sac, okay? But where it comes together, it ends up being a loop, so in my definition of a cul-de-sac is, if you got a loop, you've got multiple areas to go, with exception the last hundred feet or whatever it is, you know, at the end. And then the cul-de-sacs are only the ones on the ends.
Well, I think to Carol's point, and to Paul's point, I don't, I think that the real hangup is, I don't even know if we're at a point where we can have those conversations that Paul would like to have, because I think to Carol's point, we're not.
We don't have a plan. We don't have a plan. We're discussing something which we don't have a plan for, because our original meeting was to have a plan. Okay, and this is the same plan that we had before. So we really, we already had a vote and said that plan that we're like, we didn't care for. You've come back with a supposition of a plan, saying we can do this, but that didn't, that doesn't appear on paper. So you can do what.
And if I may, that stems from a comment from the DPW.
Right.
So if part of the process, we're getting feedback from the DPW.
So it's up to you now at this point.
I think it would be good to give them, hey, this is what it would look like.
Right.
And if the board says, you know something, we don't like that, we'd rather just have two roads, fine, we'll move forward.
I think the, speaking for myself, on the point of, is you have some direction.
Yep.
Okay, did a plan with a possible alternative second access, may be feasible. Proceed in that in a preliminary phase, and we'll leave it at that? Unless you want to.
They just gave us a plan with a second.
But that was, but that wasn't reviewed by everybody else, I think that's, that's part of the point, is that, for example, if we're gonna go back to talk to DPW about this second means progress, where it would go, how it would be constructed, except there would be, what they would wanna be reviewing, so we would prepare a second plan, or we would just revise this plan. So, and that's the question, one of the concerns I have, which I think happened at the last meeting, is that if I put two plans in front of the board, I think it leads to, which one are we gonna go with?
Yep.
Where, right now, we have one plan in front of the board with discussion of an alternative. We can revise the plan.
Which was the same thing we did a month ago.
We could revise, but this way, there's only one plan being voted on, we could revise the plan, and come back, or we could just come back. We could revise the plan and come back, or we could just come back with some concepts of what we're talking about. And if the board is more favorable to that, then revise the plan, so the plan the board's voting on is the plan that's been discussed with DPW, et cetera.
I would certainly like to see a different plan.
A revised plan.
And only one plan.
That's what I'm getting, trying to get.
So I think he gets a direction.
So do we take a look?
I think we closed the hearing, I think if we can, we need to reopen it, because we can't...
And continue it to the next date. Stay on there.
Yeah, we can't vote on it, there's nothing to vote on.
You don't have a count.
Right. We're just gonna continue the hearing. Right, well, that's...
Yeah, because it's a...
Well, that's the point.
Can we make a motion?
It's an open meeting, so, open meetings, we can open, close it, yeah.
I think you're right.
There's no time, no advertising. So we have, it's an open meeting.
All right, so this is a public information meeting?
Right.
So...
So just move the table.
All right, well, we have to undo that vote.
Make a motion to undo that.
This is procedural, whoever made the original motion needs to make the motion and pull it back. Whoever seconded it needs to make the motion.
I moved to close the hearing, so I moved to reopen the hearing first. Just move to reopen the hearing first.
Yeah, well...
Fred.
Right.
Okay, so you're up to second it.
Second it, to reopen the hearing.
So...
The meeting.
Public information meeting.
Public information meeting. And now you want to take and make a recommendation?
Well, there was a petition, we want them to address it.
No, all we have to do is make a motion to continue.
To continue that.
That's it.
Well, you have to vote on accepting this motion to reopen the public hearing.
You have to call for a vote.
Well, yeah, you call for a vote, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, sorry about that.
Fred second that?
Yes.
Yeah, you have to have the same people.
To continue the informational meeting until the 20th of August.
At 6:30.
Motion made and seconded, continue the open public meeting.
Second.
To our next...
August 20.
I don't know.
August 20.
August 20.
Next week.
Huh?
It's the next week.
Next month, August 20.
That's fine. Okay.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure he had enough time.
Yeah, I just got back from vacation, so I'm good.
What time, 6:30?
Yeah.
Well...
August 20, 6:30. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That is the question.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you want to stay here?
When I'm 6:30, you turn Fred.
Okay, why don't we bring back the...
Will we bring these guys back in?
Yeah, no more yelling?
Make a motion to return to the...
Well, then, I'll see if you're ready.
Are they ready in there, okay?
There's still yelling.
You could do communications. Yeah, let's keep going.
Okay.
You know, are you gonna come over and get on this board?
Maybe we'll move 6.1.
Just gonna start charging the fee.
Legal consulting.
What are we on?
6.1.
6.1.
Oh, yeah, communications.
Communications.
Women, I can't adjourn, can I?
No, because we have...
No.
I think...
Plan and board regulations, City Council petition 85-18, Greenbrier Realty Trust request an easement over a parcel shown on the city of Lemurs, who assesses map as map 12, parcel 5, as shown on the utility plan prepared by Bacardi Engineering, and dated December 16, 2005, and revised June 14, 2018, to install four domestic water services and one hydrant service of the city-owned water main.
It's a hydrant.
Okay.
We have a plan for this.
We had a plan for it, and this is all part of our original agreement. And so really, all it needs is, is just a recommendation from us to the city council.
You got a comment from the DPW?
I got it here somewhere.
Paul's getting a tear, just take this one.
I'm a bit...
Repetition 85-18, Greenbrier Realty Trust, request easement of a parcel shown on the city of Lemurs. Cleveland Lemurs, the department has received a review request and offers the following from us. The applicant leaves to submit an easement plan and a deed description and what is, and what is being asked to be given. This needs to be suitable for recording at the registry of deeds.
Correct.
So that's the direction from the DPW...
Do we have that?
To the city council, well, it has to go to the city council. So we're making a recommendation on the city council to accept the letter from the DPW requesting the easement plan.
So can we, can we, can we recommend...
We condition that.
Yeah.
You would recommend approval with, to them with this, with this condition?
Exactly.
Okay, I make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion made, accepted, and seconded, to accept the easement, the recommendation of the DPW for an easement on this property. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries.
Go to executive session.
But does he have something, this is general?
No, I told me to not to come today, but...
No, Patrick sent me, I'm Justin from Bacardi Engineering. Patrick was wanting to have a face and a name here, just in case.
Oh, in case, and that's good, because we're...
He passed on it?
He had a prior commitment out in Grafton.
All right, well, I know, because he knows how curial we can be, so we could have denied this for all we know.
Thank you, Justin.
Sure, be careful.
How long are we gonna wait for these people?
I know, now, I mean...
Do we have an executive session?
I'll go and see.
Yeah, go on there.
Let's go to executive session.
Come back in a moment.
I gotta hurry.
No, I think... The stuff that's on, fully on the property, it's like, what are we doing here? It's fully on that property. They have a right to do what Jenny has a right to do. I said, we're just...
They're requesting five minutes.
Well, let's go, I mean, seriously, let's go to executive session.
Okay, I'm gonna have to ask you folks to shut that off.
Is that a pain?
We're gonna go into a five-minute executive session.
Just turn it off.
And then, and then we'll come back.
Yeah, the vote, do it, do the big second.
Yeah.
We have to vote.
So I'm moving into executive session.
And we're going back into our public hearing.
Yeah, we'll be going back to here.
Okay.
The motion made and seconded.
And I second that, making that, yep.
Okay. Uh, yes.
Would you like to explain why you're going in?
Counsel of Freedom, the press...
It's in the agenda.
Don't have to shut that off. All in favor, say aye.
Uh, we have to go over there.
Uh, yeah, roll call.
Roll call.
Patrick Kerla?
Yeah.
Fredrick, Paul Wizer, Salvatore Schacor, Joan Souza, Carol Vittorio, Thomas Kerrigan.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll be back in five.
Did you explain why you were going in?
Yes.
Okay, so, we have, we have, we've got a dialogue. Put it back on the table.
We have to unplug it.
Will we reopen this?
Yeah, the motion was a time definite, so to reopen, the motion is a...
Well, I believe, remove the, from the table.
Right. That's, that's...
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries, go ahead.
We had a, we had a conversation, and the conversation was based upon his concerns in the back. We don't need these, we can eliminate them in their entirety. And we can utilize this area back here, the snow storage, just for our property and the common easement that we have for access and parking. So that's proposal number one. Proposal number two is, we're gonna take these parking spots, move them right to the building, and we're going to eliminate the last one here, turning radius issue is just to be safe, because we don't need that additional parking spot.
Okay.
So, and eliminate this in its entirety as well, we don't need it.
So where are the handicap spots going?
Well, we have the ability to put them on this side.
Where's the entrance to your building?
So the entrance to the building is here.
Okay.
And we also have the ability, and again, this is a little... Why do you have to be so close to... No, this is a little futuristic, but they're gonna hire an architect in order to redo this entrance and/or propose a new entrance. If they do propose a new entrance, we might put them right here, and that would fit very well. So, bottom line is, I'm not saying he agrees, it's not my job. However, I think it's a much better proposal for him, where he sits, because quite frankly, if these people walk and somebody else comes in here, they might not be that agreeable to do all these things. So my proposal to the board, my proposal to the imbody through his engineer, eliminate these, eliminate these, take these, move them to the building, eliminate that one. We're done, and we're fine with that. Just, however many you need, just make sure on the revised plan, when you actually draw it up, that the appropriate amount of handicap spaces are somewhere. At least you're... Also, there's one other point that we talked about. Now, 145 and 151 share common park amusement access as well. We're going to need a mutual agreement for maintenance with 151 and 145 for these parking spots. I would ask the board, if the board is going to vote on this tonight, is make that a condition of approval, that that maintenance agreement come back to the board for approval. We will in turn submit a copy to them, so that they can review it prior to, get their comments prior to having a public hearing, work it out in advance, and come back for you guys to approve it. That's important to them.
And you're okay with basically giving up all your parking around the building?
Yes, I mean, I only need what I need.
Okay.
And if this is gonna make everybody happy and they can do business, I'm fine with it. We have plenty of spaces and, yeah.
And I think even in the future, I think negotiations can be done as to where parking occurs, like along the other building lines and such, I think things can be worked out in the future.
And you still comply with the number of parking requests, you know?
Right.
You're low on the double. Fully, you know, fully, okay, yeah.
Okay, well, then, then we'll, we'll accept those changes, and how long will it take to get that done?
The drawing.
On the drawing? Well, we can get that, we can get that revised tomorrow.
All right, so let's get...
Well, what we'll do is, to get it revised, okay? And the board can, and what I'll do is, I'll review it in case, we don't have a director.
We can vote on it.
But why can't we just go, and subject to his submission of the plan and then...
Well, listen, I mean, we'll accept it, but we still have to, somebody has to review that it was done.
Well...
Bring in Stephanie, and she's gonna have to go with you, there's no director, so...
That's right, that's what I'll do.
So you're the acting director.
Yeah.
All right, but let's, so, just for the, just for the record though, because it was still, we're still on the public hearing portion, in terms of the department heads, we didn't do this, if I could, John, so conservation, police, fire, 4-day health, building, and DPW all approve, no comments at all, just for the record.
And you just wanted to add that one thing about 151.
So I would, I would recommend that you could actually put it in the record.
In a condition.
In a condition of a maintenance agreement between 145 and 151 be submitted to the board for approval prior to occupancy of the building from my client. And at that time, we will distribute that maintenance agreement to the owner in the back, through his engineer, making comment to us, we'll work it out before we come to the board.
Thanks.
Okay. So...
Okay, I make a, I make a motion to close the hearing.
Well, you gotta make a motion to, for the agreement.
Oh, you have to come here?
No, we have to close the hearing, so I'm...
Oh, yeah, close the hearing.
So I'm making a motion to close the public hearing for the special permit for 154 Central Street for off-site parking.
Right.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, close the special, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries.
And make a motion to close the public information meeting for site plan approval of 145 Central Street.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries.
And now?
And now, we go into, a motion would be in order to accept a plan with the stated modifications.
And with the condition?
And the condition that I...
So I'll make, I'll make the motion to accept the plan with the changes in parking as represented by women in Bam, and for them to submit a revised plan within a week for review by the chair of the planning board, to make sure it's consistent with the representation. And so that's condition number one. Condition number two is that the parties of 145 and 151 Central Streets shall enter into a maintenance agreement, which shall be distributed to the, to number 151, and then to be reviewed by the planning board and added to their agenda once reviewed by the owners of the property.
Seconded.
The motion, I have a second on that.